Okay, we'll do that one. Looks like that's on something else. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023 at 7 o'clock PM. Michelle, could you please call the roll?
Adamson.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Connors.
Here.
Nauman.
Here.
Sexer.
Here.
Baden.
Here.
Palzinski.
Here.
Thank you all for being here. Now, if you could all please rise, remove any caps or headdresses you may have, and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be followed by an invocation given by Bettendorf Police and Fire Chaplain, Pastor of Asbury United Methodist Church, Pastor Tom Carver. Please stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor.
Let us pray. Heavenly God and Creator of us all, in light of the recent challenges of the current flooding, may we find strength in the words of the Bible in the prophet Isaiah, chapter 43, verse 2. "When you pass through the waters, I will be with you; and through the rivers they shall not overwhelm you." May we find comfort in the knowledge that we are not alone. You've promised to be with us when we seek your light. You also have given to us each other, neighbors, friends, and fellow citizens of this city. Help our leaders model for us the ways in which we can live together and serve one another in every challenge. Protect our police officers and firefighters, our civil servants and city staff. And we pray for your wisdom for our mayor and our council members. I pray this in the name of God. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. We have the opportunity tonight to recognize all kinds of positive things happening in the City of Bettendorf, as well as four proclamations. So for all of that goodness, I'll deliver it from the center of the room. And we will start with our recognitions of some wonderful students from Bettendorf High School. All right. Our first one is a state champion wrestler from Bettendorf from this year. Jake Knight and his coach and father Dan Knight are with us. Gentlemen, would you please join me? Jake was the state champion at 113 pounds. He avenged an early season loss to Drew Ayala, whose brother wrestles in Iowa City for the Hawkeyes. So a great twosome that battled all year and kind of cleaned up the rest of the state before they got to the state finals. Jake came out victorious. Jake is a, he was a TD6 Spotlight Athlete of the Week, February 27. He's on the national team. He's wrestled on national teams in three different styles, and that's all we have. Folk, freestyle, and Greco-Roman. Just got back from wrestling at the U-17 National Qualifying Tournament in Las Vegas. Saw some awesome competition there. So ladies and gentlemen, state champion Jake Knight. I should say the council has blessed me with this opportunity now for 12 years to bring champions from all of our school districts. We happen to have a bunch of folks here from Bettendorf tonight to hold them up in our community as great examples of student athletes. Because to be successful, whether it's an individual sport, to a certain extent like wrestling, the team also did wonderfully in place. So the, the skills that it takes to be successful in the classroom, on the wrestling mat, or in student council, or future business leaders, are the skills that translate wonderfully to leaders here in our community. And we want you to see what it's like to serve on a city council. We want you to see what it's like to come down here for these meetings and encourage you to take those skill sets throughout our community, or in whatever community in which you land. So it's been a thankless job of me having fun. If you guys get to listen, but it's been really cool. So we've got a little piece of crystal for you, Jake. It says, "In recognition of Bettendorf High School's 2023 Iowa High School Athletic Association Class 3A Wrestling Champion, Jake Knight, 113 pounds." Again, congratulations, champ.
I just want to say thank you.
Thanks to my coaches. Where's Trizino? Where's Evan? Congratulations.
Thanks, Coach.
Thank you.
You betcha. Congratulations. Proud of you. Now, right next to you, I want five of you.
Picture.
Oh, we gotta get a picture. Yeah, you gotta get her. I'm comfortable around these guys.
All right, thank you.
One, two.
Awesome.
Can I have an X? Oh, no, you're right.
All right. Can we get our student council representatives to the front of the room, please? All right. Student council reps, we have Christina Peroz and Katie Mahoney are the advisors. And our student council rep, Mr. Silver, are you the only one here?
I guess so.
Oh, well. I'm proud, baby. You're the guy. Thank you for being here. This is really cool. The Bettendorf Community School District Student Council received the top national award, the 2023 National Gold Council of Excellence by the National Student Council Program. That is a part of the parent program, is the National Association of Secondary School Principals, who helps with these school student councils. And the president of that parent organization said of Bettendorf, "Exceptional student councils are a hallmark of exceptional schools." The Bettendorf High School Council has taken student leadership to the next level, creating a culture promoting scholarship and citizenship that resonates far beyond their team. So on behalf of the city council here in Bettendorf, congratulations to our Bettendorf Community School District Student Council for your top award. And we have some glass, glass, glass for you as well. Still have trophy cases all over us. In recognition of Bettendorf High School Student Council, 2023 National Gold Council of Excellence Award presented today. Congratulations.
I'd like to thank my advisors, Ms. Hess and Ms. Mahoney, because throughout the year, they have worked tirelessly and put up with us, all of the 40 of us. That's a lot of work for our vice principals. So without them, I don't think that our council will be able to thrive as it is today. And this is our last year with Ms. Hess. But to our future councils, they'll be fantastic.
Awesome.
Awesome. Thank you. Bettendorf to the box.
All right, let's do our VHS for me. FBLA reps, come on up. I know you. You're a busy boy, young man. Congratulations.
Ladies, congratulations. Congratulations.
Welcome. These are the Bettendorf Future Business Leaders of America students, who attended the state conference in Corvina with over 700 other state students. These students were able to network and compete in these business, what, what would you call them? Are they all competitions? Okay. Business-related competitions, and they received multiple awards at the state and the national level. Those we are honoring tonight are champions. Charlie Silver with first place in impromptu speaking. Maxwell Rantia with first place in client service. Brooklyn Neal and Delaney Sullivan, first place in public service announcement. Brooklyn Neal and Winston Shaner, first place in marketing. Maxwell Rantia, Maya Miller, Charlie Silver, first place in vocabulary relay. This Future Business of America organization is a student-led, is student-led, whose mission is inspiring and preparing students to become community-minded business leaders in a global society through relevant career preparation and leadership excellence. Sounds like some future leaders to me. Congratulations. He had to speak. Would one of you like to say something, or both of you?
Sure. Um, I'd just like to say pushing yourself is really important, just like in wrestling. It's really important to make yourself uncomfortable. I think that's the biggest learning point from FBLA. You have to have the passion, and if you don't push yourself, then you're not going to accomplish anything. So, yeah.
Good trait to learn. Awesome.
I've done things that I never would have done otherwise. You know, I'm not a people person, but this has really pushed me to talk to people and learn business skills that I wouldn't get anywhere else. So it's been, it's been really great.
Sarah Rader, are you with this whole group right here?
I am, yeah. Just from afar.
One of the fantastic teachers in ethics. Excellent. Thank you very much. One more. Yours says what you might expect. "In recognition of the Bettendorf High School's Future Business Leaders of America, 2023 State Leadership Conference, first place, finish impromptu speaking, client services, public service announcement, marketing, and vocabulary relay." Congratulations. Let's sneak together for a picture. One more round of applause. You're welcome. Congratulations. All right, didn't skip the Healthy Hometown today. I sort of didn't hear about it. So let's have our Healthy Hometown group, including our Director of Culture and Recreation, Kim Kidwell. Nicole Carter from Genesis is here, Teresa Pangton, from Unity Point. Dr. Michelle Morris, the Bettendorf Community School District Superintendent. No Tom Bowles. Are you coming up?
Yep, Brooke's coming up.
Yes, Brooke. Brooke was working here when she got started. Now she's with Eastern Island Community College District. And we're very happy to have you. Kim, you're at the floor.
Oh, great. Thank you, your honor.
Impromptu speaking.
Surprise.
You can get awards for that.
I learned that in high school, from my, you know, council. Anyhow, thank you. No, we're really excited to receive this award. The people you see here are a small representation of our steering committee for Healthy Hometown, which is made up from people all over the community who have a real vested interest in keeping our community healthy and safe. Some of those initiatives include healthier snacks, at meetings. Brooke worked a lot on the workplace initiative, even though she doesn't work here anymore. That's fine. She worked hard on that. She worked hard at what she was here, bringing the City of Bettendorf Wellness Program initiatives to other workplaces, so that we could model for other places what that might look like in their workplace. Keeping our trails and our bike paths and our parks clean, health, healthy and safe. Providing water outside at our parks, trails. All of those initiatives, and things like including safe walking paths to schools. All of these things all came together and helped us get this Healthy Hometown award. So I want to thank all of you guys for your commitment. This is a volunteer committee that meets, you know, whenever we can. But there's also a lot of offshoot committees that also meet and do a lot of work in the community. So we couldn't do it without collaboration and teamwork from the whole community, so.
Congratulations. We had 40 or 50 of the steering committees large.
Yeah.
And the matrix that they looked at was like 30 or 40 pages. It made a ton of stuff. So on behalf of the City of Bettendorf, thank you very, very much for all the work that you put in. More than one, like two, three years? Yeah, three years of work.
Yeah.
Congratulations. It comes with a check. It's a big check, but not a really big check. It's 5,000 bucks, but it comes with a big check. So that's kind of fun. Hold the check, we'll get together. Let's take a picture.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
The Healthy Hometown program, so we'll use it to keep him early in our, our spaces in the community, so.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate you guys very much for all the hard work that you put into that. Onto some proclamations, the first of which is Mental Health Awareness Month. And for that, we welcome Cecilia Bailey, the Executive Director with Quad Cities Open Network. Cecilia, come on up. All good, Nicole. Nicole Carter's coming too.
For all of your work. Thank you. And thank you. We appreciate you.
I do have a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. "Whereas mental health is essential to our physical health and overall health of our community. And whereas the 2021 Community Health Assessment indicated that the Quad Cities has a significantly higher rate of chronic depression and persons being treated for mental health than the US average. And whereas in June 2022, the FCC launched 988 to replace the National Suicide Prevention Hotline in an effort to make it easier for people to access a lifeline anywhere. And whereas the Quad City Behavioral Health Coalition is working to share this message and educate the public on the resources available to advance the behavioral health of the Quad Cities. And more information can be found at qcbhcweebly.com. Now therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the mayor of the City of Bettendorf, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month in our community. And I encourage all citizens to promote the ongoing education on the importance of prioritizing mental health and reaching out to get connected to services if a mental health concern arises."
Here.
Here. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Who would like to speak?
So good evening, all. Thank you, your honor. We are so humbled and proud to be here to accept this proclamation. The Quad Cities Behavioral Health Coalition is a coalition of over 60 agencies that are working together to advance behavioral health. I have the pleasure of acting as fiscal agent for the Zero Suicide Initiative that sits under the Quad Cities Behavioral Health Coalition, which will address processes as well as training throughout the community. And I am very honored to stand next to our committee chair today to accept this proclamation.
Congratulations.
Picture, picture.
Sorry, I'm still editing pictures.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next proclamation is for National School Nurse Day, which is May 10th of this year. Jordan Drain, President of the Iowa School Nurse Association Organization, and an elementary school nurse with the Bettendorf Community School District. I hope we're here tonight. Come on up. Oh, so you're Jordan. Okay, fantastic. Thank you for being here. Didn't know if it was a nurse from the school district. All right, so. "I have a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas all students have a right to have their physical and mental health needs safely met while in a school setting. And whereas school nurses are professional nurses that serve on the front lines, understanding the link between health and learning, and are in a position to make a positive difference, providing support for children every day, and having been ensuring students' academic success for more than 120 years. And whereas school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, families, healthcare providers on behalf of children's health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our nation's children, and are members of school-based teams like EAP, Disaster Emergency Recovery, School Health Services, and all the planning that goes into those divisions. They provide care, coordination, to address everything that happens within that school population. Now therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the mayor of the City of Bettendorf, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 10th, 2023, as National School Nurses Day in our community. And I encourage all of our citizens to celebrate our school nurses and express gratitude for all they do to keep our children safe all year long."
Here, here.
So I'm Jordan Drain. I am a elementary school nurse here in Bettendorf. So I take care of 422 pre-K through 5 kids every single day. I am also the president of the Iowa School Nurse Organization, which is an organization whose goal is to optimize the health and education of all students. We want to push for the education and advocacy towards school nurses, with our goal of being a school nurse in every building all day, every day, to ensure the safety of our kids and staff, because we don't leave our physical and mental health ailments at the door. So thank you for acknowledging us with this proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you, your honor. All right, National Salvation Army Week, May 15th through 21st. Robert Dollar, Major Robert Dollar. Quad Cities Coordinator and John Hofer, Ministry Assistant for the Salvation Army Army Year. Sit in the front row, ready for this.
I always like when you come visit. It's always happy.
My pleasure.
It's good to see you. Pleasure to meet you today. And thank you for being here, sir.
"I do have a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas the Salvation Army has been serving the people of the Quad Cities for 135 years physically, emotionally, and spiritually. And whereas the Salvation Army is present whenever need is the greatest, especially during times of crisis, when, where vulnerable cities, citizens are more at risk of becoming homeless, hungry, addicted, or spiritually tired. And whereas it is fitting and proper on Salvation Army Week to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the Bettendorf area. And whereas National Salvation Army Week is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others with their resources and time during a difficult period many of us are experiencing. Now therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the mayor of the City of Bettendorf, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 15th through the 21st, 2023, as National Salvation Army Week in our community. And I encourage all citizens to join together to give back to the community in a way that is personally meaningful."
Here.
Here.
Congratulations. Thanks again for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate this opportunity and proclamation. As you mentioned, the Salvation Army's been in the Quad Cities for 135 years, and I may be old, but no, I wasn't there. I do love my ministry. Every day, each and every day is a different opportunity. This morning at 5 o'clock, I was at the airport, certain coffee and donuts to almost 100 veterans on the Honor Flight. Then I was working on deploying hundreds of cleanup kits, or flag cleanup kits, getting those mobilized, and then here with you this evening. So it just gives me great opportunity, and we appreciate the support of the community. On any given day, we have almost 200 people that we are providing shelter or other housing support to, and over 50 men that are going through our addictions program, finding new hope for their addictions and becoming productive citizens in the community. And so this Salvation Army Week gives us an opportunity to kind of showcase some of the work that we're doing. We will have an open house at our Kirkwood location in Davenport on May 16th from 10 to 12, and then at our adult real little patient center on Kimberly and Brady on Wednesday from 12 to 2. And we'll put a news release out, but we hope that people stop by, take a tour, and get to know what we're doing. Thank you so much.
Tremendous. Thank you, gentlemen. Great to see you. All right, Public Works Director Brian Schmidt, the last one of the evening.
Yes, sir. Happy to be here, Brian Schmidt. Thank you, your honor. I have to say hi to Jordan in the back, who came up to receive the proclamation. She used to watch our two young sons when we lived in Long Grove, across the street from them. Wanted to say hi.
Oh, yes, and we know that. Okay, I do have a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. "Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed community is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs, such as sewers and streets, solid waste collection, and the numerous other services provided by our Public Works Department. And whereas the efficiency of qualified and dedicated staff is essential for our community to meet the needs of our citizens and to provide the highest quality of service that Bettendorf has the reputation for consistently providing. And whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Parks Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the mayor of the City of Bettendorf, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 20th, 2023, as Public Works Day in Bettendorf. And I think you're going to hear some more about that. And the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2023, is Public Works Week in our community. And I ask that all citizens acquaint themselves with our Public Works Staff and Operations and to take great pride in the excellent service provided by their outstanding Public Works Department and our leader of the Public Works Department, Brian Schmidt is here. Brian?
Thank you, your honor. Well, first of all, thank you for the proclamation. As the mayor announced, that we will be once again hosting National Public Works, or because of National Public Works Week, we always host National, or Public Works Day up at the maintenance center at 4303 Devil's Glen Road, right behind the post office. It's a great day. It's a free event for the public. You can bring your family up there. We'll have many trucks, vehicles, different types of equipment. My staff will be there to answer any questions. We will be serving hot dogs, brats, popcorn, ice cream. We'll have a bounce house. The kids can jump on the bounce house and have face painting, plow painting, you name it. Plus, we're going to have many vendors there. We're going to have support from the Bettendorf Library, the Family Museum, Free ZRS Committee, and many more. So like I said, it's a free event for the public, so please come out and join us Saturday, May 20th, from 9 to 1.
Thank you, 9 to 1, May 20th. Let's just get a picture. Jeff, you can get us a picture.
Just ran out of film. Thanks.
It's a new cloud. All right, lots of goodness to share. Way to go, everybody. Very nice to be able to recognize great things happening in our community and the great people making all those great things happen. All right, public requests of council. If you have an issue you'd like to discuss with city council or make a request, now is the time to do so. The public is welcome to make a request on any item not already on the agenda for public hearing. Please limit your comments to two minutes. Please try not to be repetitive. Please refrain from outbursts like yelling and clapping. Please be respectful with your comments. We'd like to hear from you. Please state your name and your address before you begin. We have someone at the podium, sir. Go right ahead with your name and address.
My name is Tom Hutton. I live at 40 Park Lane Circle, Bettendorf. This is the house I live in. It's on, I say, on Park Lane Circle. Most of you don't know where Park Lane Circle is, so we're going to show them maps. What's, who's? This is a map. What I'm talking about then is that little circle, not quite a circle, but it's close. Right here.
Sure.
The concern we have is as you come into this area, this area here is pretty flat. But both sides of this is a sharp hill that ends up right in front of my house. The problem is the street. This area is 50, 60, was built in the 60s. So if it showed, next slide, please. This is a good part of the street. Next. This is what's been happening is as this thing is eroded away, this is the original concrete street. This is the asphalt that's been put on top, and this is what's washed away as the rain eases away at it. So the next few slides, just go ahead. It's just more of the damage. This is the middle of the street that's starting to break up on the downhill side. Next. More, more of the damage. This is what we're putting up with. Next. This is the most severe area of where the damage is. It's been simply washed away. It's even so bad, it's difficult to walk on. Next. This is gravel. Used to be the asphalt. Now it's the gravel that lays on top of the street. Next. Some more of the damage. The city does come in and patch occasionally. I think they do it when they have some leftover gravel, asphalt. I think they do it when they have some leftover gravel, asphalt. They come in and they pick out an area and they, and they put down this asphalt and drive away because that's all they've got. Anyway, what I'd like to see happen is the city finally pay attention to this part of the city. It's been neglected, it's been promised, people have been told it's gonna happen, it doesn't happen, I've been told there's no money for it. It's about time the city starts taking care of the whole city, not just part of it. So I would like to have two things, a new street for the area, and then secondly, I'd like to have the city come in and start sweeping this street on a regular basis. We haven't seen a sweeper in our area since last fall. So all this gravel is piling up, and it is dangerous. We've had one lady who had a motorcycle, a mature lady, wasn't some kid, a mature lady, she's riding her motorcycle out just on a joyride. She came down that hill, she hit the gravel right in front of my house, the bike fell on her leg, compound fracture. Why? Because there's gravel on the street and it hasn't been taken care of. I hope something will get done, I've done, I'm talking with people, it sounds like maybe there's hope for us. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hutton. Let's go to our Director of Public Works, Mr. Schmidt, just to update us on where this falls within our capital improvement project budget.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, we have been down a street sweeper due to supply chain issues. So we do, we did receive a brand-new sweeper last week. I can promise Tom that we will have a sweeper out there tomorrow morning to address the gravel issue that he brought to my attention. As far as the street itself, it's been a street that we've been identified for several years in our capital improvement program. We just haven't funded it. It is a long section of street, not only is the street in disrepair, but also all the sanitary sewer and storm sewer underneath the street. So that will make the cost of doing a full reconstruction of that project pretty significant. So when we move into goal-setting and to budget this coming fall, this will be a project that we will be identifying as something to place onto our capital improvement project program.
Thank you, sir. Public requests of council, anybody else wish to be heard on an item not already on tonight's agenda for public hearing? You can approach the podium in the back, state your name and address. We'd like to hear from you for about two minutes.
Nick Kelly, thirty-four sixty-five Overland Drive. I'm here tonight to make you know, aware, I made some of you aware beforehand. Every day I drive on Devil's Glen Road, I live off Jonathan, which is off Devil's Glen Road by the Coffee Hound, and probably for the last six months, every day I about get hit by making a left-hand turn because people are coming over to make the left-hand turn at Belmont before they even pass the Coffee Hound, and they are driving at high rates of speed anywhere from thirty-five to forty miles an hour down that road like they would be if they were in the normal two lanes. I wanted to make you guys aware of it, the council I have had called and left a message for the city engineer responsible for traffic patterns to call me back, and he has not called me. I just thought you guys should know it tonight, I about got hit twice when I came to the meeting. I purposely went out that way and made a right-hand turn on the Devil's Glen, and as I was sitting at the intersection, I watched another car be in the turning lane before the Coffee Hound and about hit the guy trying to make a left-hand turn. He was driving a truck, I drive a truck, I feel comfortable, but I don't want to have somebody else die because they hit me. So I just want to make you guys aware of it, and hopefully there is something we can do to fix stupid.
Chief Kimball, did you, do you have any knowledge of issues there, or is that something that you guys have been looking at?
I am not, I mean, I'm not aware, I've heard of this before, but I'm not aware of any accidents or anything up there. It's, it's that center, it's the center, that center lane where sometimes people don't realize how, when to go over, sometimes they may commit, but I would say that, that could be issues at other areas of the city too that have those type of lanes, but I'm not specifically aware of an ongoing issue, but I'm not gonna say it's not happening.
Absolutely, yeah, let's check into it. All right, anybody else wish to be heard on an item not already on tonight's agenda for public hearing? Please approach the podium in the back, we'd like to hear from you. If you think you want to speak, you can head back and get ready for the next one.
My name is Rich Coon, I live at, or my wife and I live at thirty-four fifty-four Crown Point Circle, which is part of the townhomes that are, that line Woodlawn Road for the Dollar Tree Project. First of all, I'd just like to mention that I'm pro-business, and I've spent thirty years in the financial services business, and creating more business opportunities is good for communities and for its citizens. It's really exciting to be part of a growing community rather than one that's stagnant and losing tax revenue, and its citizens too. It's one of the primary reasons why we moved to the Quad Cities about four years ago and ended up choosing Bettendorf as our new hometown. The landing project I heard about last night is a perfect example of that. Having said that, I am concerned with the Dollar Tree proposal. Doing some research on an FDA website, I find that the company has had two FDA warning letters issued to them within the last four and a half years. The first was issued in November of two thousand and nineteen concerning contract manufacturers used to produce their private label drugs. The second was issued just last November, November eighth, for violations at the West Memphis, Arkansas Distribution Center that were so egregious and numerous that the company voluntarily closed the facility in two thousand and twenty-two. I'd also submit the Dollar Tree's Occupational Safety and Health Administration safety violations. On OSHA's website, on August first of twenty-two, December first of twenty-two, and April twenty-fourth of twenty-three, just a few weeks ago, OSHA proposed penalties of over two point three million dollars for safety violations in their stores. You know, these are, this is gonna be our neighbor, or could be our neighbor, and that's not exactly the kind of neighbor we would like to have. Additionally, these types of stores, when they're serviced with supplies and all, there's a large truck that comes down and has, needs a large turning radius for an eighty-thousand-pound delivery truck. That would probably be coming right down Woodfield Drive, as we heard last night, and in all likelihood, they would pull in front of the townhomes there and then back into the, that site, or the egress point on Woodfield Road, shining lights right directly into the townhomes on that, along, that go right along Woodfield. It'd be quite an annoyance, to say the least, in there. So I'd ask for you, at a minimum, that we close off the egress on Woodfield Road and establish another point of access between lots one and two. But additionally, I'd like to see that perhaps table the motion for the time being, and maybe make sure of the inspections of the distribution centers that would fulfill this particular store's needs, be inspected, and make sure that whatever happens, or happened in Arkansas does not happen up in here. Finally, I'd also like to mention to you that I want you to know that, that we know that we're all on the same team here. We all want the best for Bettendorf. I want, thank you for your service to the community, and I'm sure you may not feel like it at times, but it is appreciated, we do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coon, appreciate that. Anybody else wish to be heard on an item not already on tonight's agenda? You can approach the podium in the back.
Good evening, my name is Chris Nguyen, I'm a civil engineer with CJW Transportation Consultants out of Springfield, Missouri. I'm representing the developer on the Dollar Tree Ridge Investment Group, as well as Dollar Tree itself. I want to thank you guys for your time tonight. I heard, I was here at the meeting of a whole last night, I heard a couple of concerns that, that you guys as a city council had. I also heard some concerns that you guys, that your guys' planning and zoning board had when we met a couple of weeks ago. Since we've heard these concerns, we have updated our site plan, I hope you guys received the letter, I believe you guys did, with that updated site plan.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate Mark Hunt, the Community Development Director, for helping facilitate that this morning on short notice. I would like to say, as far as the access goes, we have altered that or rotated it slightly so that the headlights will now be pointing in between the buildings, and we've gone to a six-and-a-half-foot monument sign as opposed to the twenty-foot-tall pylon sign. Those were the two main things I heard out of last night's meeting. Out of planning and zoning, we heard concerns about a buffer screen, a vegetative buffer screen, we've added those on the west and north side to protect those neighbors as best we can with vegetation. I do want to talk about the access spacing, I know there was a couple of council members that had some questions about access and why it was where it was and not closer to Middle Road. A lot of communities, and I'm not sure I wasn't able to find your, your specific access management plan, but in general, it's not safe to have an access that close to a major intersection or a major road. I was able to find the Iowa statewide urban design specifications, Iowa DOT, Springfield, Missouri DOT, Springfield, Missouri, and Missouri DOT, they all recommend a spacing of between a hundred and seventy and two hundred and twenty feet for an access from a major road. You gotta think about if you've got two cars sitting there, maybe someone wants to turn a left and is backing up traffic, and then you got someone coming off of Middle Road that wants to take a left, and well, it's backed up and they can't, so now you got someone sitting on Woodfield, and you got people turning off of Middle Road, creating a, a safety hazard. So we have that there, that's one of the reasons we have it backed so far. The second is the WB sixty-seven, which you heard this gentleman speak about. I want you to know that the WB sixty-seven does not back up at all onto Woodfield Drive, it comes in off Woodfield Drive, does basically a U-turn in our parking lot, and then backs into the loading dock, and then pulls out forward. So we won't be doing any abnormal maneuvers on Woodfield Drive, Dollar Tree doesn't allow that. Those are the main things I want to touch on. Ultimately, I can't speak on, you know, some of the, the violations that this gentleman broke, brought up about Dollar Tree, I'm sure that that's probably consistent with a lot of national retailers, I'm sure they've had issues here and there throughout their past. The thing is, is we've disclosed to you guys what we're putting here, we're putting in a Dollar Tree. I probably could've came before you guys with a shell, ten thousand square foot retail building, not have told you what it was, and left it at that, it could've been a multi-tenant building with four different users. At the end of the day, I just want you to know, we meet your zoning code, we meet your comprehensive plan, and we've been responsive of all requests we've received from city council and planning and zoning, so I would ask that you guys support our request tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Anybody else wish to be heard on an item not already on tonight's agenda for a public hearing? Okay, we'll close that public requests of council. Let's move to our first public hearing. Michelle, did we publish notice of our two thousand and twenty-four State Transit Assistant Funds?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Council's well aware of this program, and we won't have Brian go through it, but this is our application for those transit funds to allow us to work, to do the public transit that we do. Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to that?
No, we did not.
Okay, let's open our public hearing with regard to the two thousand and twenty-four State Transit Assistant Funds for Transit System Operations. Anybody wish to be heard on this item? Okay, we'll close that public hearing, Councilmember Sexer, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the City of Bettendorf's fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four application for State Transit Assistant Funds for Transit System Operations in an amount of two hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars. I move approval of the, of this resolution.
Second.
Any discussion here? Councilmember Adamson, please.
As, not to be redundant, but as I've said at every planning session and every budget hearing, there's gotta be a better way to provide public transportation than the system we're using. I, I can't remember the cost per rider, but it's ten dollars, fifteen dollars per person or something, there's gotta be a better way, but we don't have it at this moment, so I'll support this, but I think we, we just need to keep looking around. Thank, thank you.
Any further comments, discussion? Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Nauman.
Aye.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Palsinski.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
Well, we move to our resolution for Councilmember Nauman. Last night, we heard a whole bunch about the landing project, we've got the phases in, we've got a great plan, and does anybody have any questions of any person who may have on staff who presented last night? Anything from finance or public works, culture and rec, our engineers on the phone? We had a great presentation last night. Okay, Councilmember Nauman, please help us with the resolution.
Thank you, Your Honor, I do have a resolution awarding the contract and approving the contract and bond for the landing project. I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Other than to say, congratulations, thank you, way to go, great work, thanks for the partnership, everybody in town? Yes, Councilmember Sexer.
Thank you, Your Honor. I requested a spreadsheet on the funds, and it was provided by Jason today, thank you very much. It indicates that the money is there.
You weren't lying to us, were you? Now you got it in all kinds of color. Way to go, Jason. Any further discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick comment.
Councilmember Nauman.
Thank you. This has been a long time coming and a lot of hard work. I don't know how many committees and subcommittees and layers that we peeled back on this, so again, not to rush through this, but there's so much doggone work that went into this moment, so didn't want to just let that go, and if, Your Honor, I'm sure you-
My quick screaming wasn't enough?
Have a word or two, because I do think this is a generational amenity for us.
Yeah, it's fantastic.
And a tremendous amount of work. I know Decker worked some magic in terms of some relationships, that is never to be taken advantage of, but for the community and all the parents and families that will enjoy this going forward, it's just a big deal.
It's a huge deal.
Thank you all.
Yeah, great work, all. Happy day. Other discussion? Michelle, please, call the roll.
Nauman.
Aye.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Palsinski.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
Nice, all right, unanimously voted for approval.
Get the wrecking ball out.
All right, they'll be starting in a week, they were told. Okay, Councilmember Palsinski, please. This one has a request that we waive the second and third readings, it's a stop sign at what has become a more dangerous intersection at Devil's Glen and Hopewell. Can we entertain a motion to waive the second and third readings to put up a stop sign? It doesn't seem like that would be too harmless.
So moved. Second.
Michelle, please call the roll on the motion to waive the second and third readings, please.
Nauman.
Aye.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Palsinski.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
Councilmember Palsinski, you got the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the first and final reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code Section six dash, dash one, dash three, two, two, A, two. Vehicles entering stopped intersection by adding a stop intersection on Devil's Glen Road at Hopewell Avenue and on Forest Grove Road at Devil's Glen Road. I move approval of the ordinance at its final reading.
Second.
Any discussion on the stop sign? Yes, I was gonna call you a council member, what an insult. City administrator play.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a reminder that the stop sign at Forest Grove and Devil's Glen will be temporary for about a year. We have ordered traffic signals for that intersection, but right now with the supply chain issues, it's about a year. We hope we'll get in earlier, but this is a stopgap measure in the short term, but ultimately the intersection will be a full traffic and traffic-lit intersection.
Makes sense. Yes, Councilmember Palsinski.
I'd like to add a comment, thank you, Your Honor. I've received a number of calls on this, and I think this will, this will be, as Decker mentioned, a stopgap for the community, because I know that there's an increased flow of traffic through there right now with the detours around TBK, so we really appreciate everybody's work on getting these approved, and I know the residents will be happy with that as well.
Terrific. Brian, yes, Director of Public Works, Brian Schmidt.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to note that very similar to when we did a stop, a speed change on Fifty Third, we will also have signage, directional signage, informational signage on-
we will also have signage or directional signage, informational signage on Devil's Glen, Hopewell and Middle Road to, or excuse me, Forest Grove Road Drive, rather than, to inform the public that there is the signs there, because I know that's going to be an issue, especially with the east-west traffic on Forest Grove.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion on this item? Yes, Councilmember Connors.
Brian, are we anticipating some enhancement to those stop signs to make them a little bit more visible than a standard stop sign?
I believe they were. They were going to be the LED ones.
Yeah, so I was just reading an email. I was anticipating this question. So there's an email that was sent out by Brent Morlock. So we're going to put the blinker LED signals. Those have all come in, so we actually physically have all them. And the plans are, after if you, if you do approve this night, that they're going to try and get most of this stuff installed next Monday in between the morning rush and everything. So we'll see this all go, but we do have the blinker LED on the stop signs to make them more visible at all those intersections.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Hey, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Nauman.
Aye.
Saxor.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Palzinski.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
We have also unanimously approved those two stop signs. We move to what was Consent Agenda J, moved into tonight's regular agenda as 15. And before we get to this, we will move to our city attorney, Chris Kern. Just as a reminder, what type of decision you have in front of you tonight, based upon our discussion with our friends who came to talk to us tonight. We thank you for being heard. Counselor Kern.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, as we've gone over several times, these sort of land use decisions, there are different types of decisions. This is a quasi-judicial decision where the council is applying the facts. Here, the, the application for a site plan to the law, which is the zoning ordinance. Planning and zoning recommended approval unanimously. Staff recommends approval as, from staff's perspective, this site app, site plan is compliant with our, with our zoning ordinance. If council does desire to deny the site plan, what we do need to do is have specific reasons pointing to the zoning ordinance of, of how this is deficient. So that's really the, the key is, we aren't making law here. So if this is going to be denied, we need to point to the site plan and how it's not in compliance with the, with the zoning ordinance.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that. Councilmember Adamson, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving a site development plan for 4060 Middle Road, Lot 2, Crown Point, 12th Edition. I move approval of this resolution.
Second.
Any discussion on the item? I'll look left first. Councilmember Adamson?
You know, this, I've been on the council 14, 14 years now, and this is, this has been the, the most difficult for me. People, people love their neighborhoods. They live their homes. And they unfortunately don't own the land and can't control and get something that they would prefer in that location. But we, like, our attorney says, if, if we don't have a legal basis to turn it down, we're just going to end up in court and they're going to get, they're going to get it anyway. And it just going to cost him a lot of time and probably cost us some money. So I'm going to support this, this plan, even though I know that it's not, it's not something that is popular in the area. But I think we, I think it's our responsibility to do that.
Other discussion? Councilmember Saxor, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. My understanding is that to address some of the points that Mr. Kuhn brought up, the state of Iowa and Scott County have got inspectors that inspect things like OSHA and health issues in food establishments. And those are not city responsibilities, but they are taken care of by other government agencies. Is that correct?
Generally speaking, yeah.
Yeah, I think that is correct. Labor issues, OSHA issues, other issues that have been brought up with regard to this type of business are not within the purview of, of the city and certainly not something that's part of the zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Nauman.
Aye.
Saxor.
Aye.
Baden.
No.
Palzinski.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
No, based on the fact that I think that the site plan could have been a little bit more courteous to the adjoining property owners. I'm voting no.
Okay, passes five to two. Let's take a look at our consent agenda. Are there items on the consent agenda on which we have a question before we move to our motion? All right, let's entertain a motion to approve consent.
Second.
Who's first, Nick? Palzinski, yep. Any discussion on consent? Having had the opportunity to go over these items last night at Committee of the Whole. All right, seeing none, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Nauman.
Aye.
Saxor.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Palzinski.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
We have unanimously passed our consent agenda. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. Councilmember Brown?
This is for Brian. On the Parkdale issue, and I didn't catch the name. You know, you were going to bring that.
Parkdale.
Is it Parkdale? Okay. On the Parkdale Street, you know, we'll bring it up in goal setting. Can you just take a look? You know, I don't know. I know ideally, we don't want to patch it, but maybe there's some spots that at least we could patch for the summer until we bring up the permanent solution.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, like I said, we'll get the street sweeper out there tomorrow and clean up the gravel, and we'll start patching. Just unfortunately, over the past three weeks, my staff has been fighting floods and walking the levee and whatnot, but we're, it's starting to recede now, and, and we can start getting back to normal here, hopefully in a week.
So that'll be like an interim, at least something till we can get to the sound. Okay.
Councilmember Saxor?
Thank you, Your Honor. Last week, we had cleanup in downtown, and last night at Committee of the Whole, Ryan from DVO commented on that. I would specifically like to thank the city staff that helped organize that and helped participate in that, cleaning up downtown in the first word here. Thank you.
Over 100 volunteers. That was nice. Councilmember Baden, we're just going to have a discussion today.
I would like to say thank you to Brian and his staff for the work they did out on Harbor Drive, getting 80,000.
92.
92,000.
92,000 sandbags out there because so far I've had no complaints or heard from anybody that there was any major problems out there, so thank you.
Councilmember Adamson?
Thank you.
We're going to have public requests of counsel for counsel. You guys can talk.
I did get a call from Nick three weeks ago. I know him from church. And so I, I spent a little time looking at that intersection there at Belmont and Devil's Glen Road. And I think maybe restriping it, I think we need to take a look at it because I really do think it's, it's hazardous.
It's a tough interchange.
I don't know, but something temporary and then look at something a little bit longer term. Because I, I do think it's a safety issue. That's it.
All right. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, we stand adjourned. Good work, everybody. Thanks for being here. Appreciate you.